Welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting of August the 16th, 2022. At this time, we're going to have an invocation by Councilmember Chad Mims and then followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Travis Beard.
Please stand with him. Bow our hands. Dear Heavenly Father, just want to thank you so much for the opportunity to meet together. Just thank you so much for the opportunity to serve, help us to make the decisions that are the best for Tupelo, but most importantly, they glorify you, watch over and protect our leaders, our administration of this city, and we ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Face flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I call a meeting to order and ask the Vice President, Councilman Travis Beard, to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
President Brown, I would recommend that we amend the agenda by adding number 18 to the agenda in the matter of correction of minutes of the June 21st, 2022 meeting.
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
I've got a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Proclamation, recognitions, and reports agenda. Any proclamations? No boys or girl scouts? Employee recognitions? Public recognitions? We're going to start with Ms. Davis.
One thing that I wanted to mention is Mr. Wayne Herbert, who works for TVN, is would be presented outstanding honor in Atlanta in September for serious service to the television industry. I think he worked pretty close to more than 25 years at TVN, and he will receive this distinguished honor in Atlanta in September, which I think we should be very proud of because this, the person who, the group that's presented used to do the Emmy Awards, and he will be honored there. So I just hope you'll be keeping, keep him in your prayers for that honor. And then I would like to invite those who live in the park here to our end of the summer bash. We're having a big event at CC Augusta Center, swimming, and other type activities will be going on, and we're trying to work to make this the best, best neighborhood association in Tupelo. We're working very hard to get bigger tenants at all our meetings, so anybody who was a part of the park here in the neighborhood, you're invited along with others who would like to attend this event from 5:30 to 7:30 on the, on the, on this coming Thursday at CC Augusta Center.
President Brown, I've got a couple of announcements. One, we have several in our community who are experiencing some health issues, including my wife, Angie Northington's mom, Councilman Palmer. Just ask if you have personal faith, if you remember them, uplift them in your prayers. Also, Thursday night at 6:30 at the Catholic Church, the Tupelo Touchdown Club are having their annual award in honor of my best friend, Coach Mickey Linder, and they're recognizing Bob Monroe at that, at that meeting at the Catholic Church. So if you have, have an opportunity to come out to that, I just invite you to attend. Buddy?
Yes, I'd just like to say, all the people that came out Saturday, Elvis spent Appreciation Day. It was a great day. The birthplace did a great job. I personally had a lot of fun, so anyhow, it was nice. Thank you, thank you very much.
Reg?
I don't have anything. I don't have anything either.
I don't have anything. At this time, the mayor's remarks.
Just one thing I just wanted to mention again, the hard work that Abby Christian and Dennis Bonds did on our race grant, you know, we were awarded that one point for me, is we can kind of start on engineering or rail projects, and I know they're actively looking for more grants already in the future, so we've got some, the quiet, those two quiet zones that are going up, and we're looking forward to finally getting some type of continuity and some momentum going for some of these other projects, so that's all I have.
Here, here. At this time, we're going to close the public agenda, close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Item one is public hearings, in the matter of public hearing on lot mowing. Do we have anybody that's here to speak on lot mowing? Item two, in the matter of public hearing for the demolition of 502 Augusta Street, 5810 Chestable Road, 517 North Gloucester Street, and 3424 Walsh Road. Do we have anybody here to speak on any of those four properties? Seeing none, we go to item three, in the matter of public hearing, property cleaning and debris removal of 1204 Audubon Drive and 1641 Oakview Circle. Anybody to speak on those two addresses? Could you come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes? And which item or which address are you speaking to?
1204 Audubon Drive. I wanted to thank y'all. My name is Anthony Joshua Hewitt. That's what I go by. I live at 1204 Audubon Drive. I got the notice of the disrepair of my yard, and I just, it's, it's not easy coming before a group of people and talking about your faults, especially when you've got a crowd and a camera, so that makes it even better. I don't, I didn't take the best care of you. Around that time, back in late April, my father passed away, and I was just neglectful about a lot of things. I got the first notice, we got the yard mowed, we needed to trim the bushes, did all that stuff. It said, in a couple of days, it would come by for a thing. I never heard anything, so I thought things were all right. Evidently, they weren't, and that's on me. I apologize. I've already cleaned out the backyard, I've gotten everything we needed, there's one side of the house that I still need to do, but there is the problem of the dead tree. I'm just going to be honest, I cannot afford to have it removed right now. I have no way to pay for it, and I cannot do it myself. It is very large. It stretches over my house. I tried this weekend to get out there and do something just to get the branches trimmed off, and I was unable to. I don't have a truck, I don't know anybody with a truck. I can't rent a cherry picker to go up there and get it off. I promise you, as soon as I have the funds available to me, that tree will come down, but I just don't have it right now, and I can't tell you I'm going to have it within the next month. I appreciate all that Tupelo City Council does. My father was very involved in Tupelo City. I feel like I've done him an extreme disservice. I just wish you would take that in consideration when making your decisions.
Thank you.
If he could call me after this at 871-8394, I would try to help you with your tree problem. Possibly if we have someone in Tupelo who is helping, a church that's helping people who are not able to cut down their trees, 871-8394.
871-8394. I certainly will.
Also, get with Mr. Newman, there might be some other outlets that we can help with some trees, so that's why I just touched base with Tanner, and he'll get you fixed up. Thank you. All right, we have no appeals, and next up is a citizens' hearing, and Judge Stacy Bell.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I won't take up a lot of your time, but I know that you had some citizen hearings last week about the budget, and I was not able to come, and I appreciate being allowed to be put on the agenda tonight. First, I want to say thank you. Last year, I presented a proposal for you to help us fund a newly formed, what's called a family defense team, and you so kindly gave us those funds. I am here again tonight asking for those funds and asking for you to consider an increase to your award to the youth court. I gave you pretty details about that, about our family defense team. There's a lot of information there. I hope you take a minute to read it. I'm not going to go as in-depth as, as those papers go, but one thing I want you to understand, our family defense team is basically a logger, a social worker, and an attorney that represents a child. The attorney represents a parent, the social worker helps the parent do what CPS tells them that they need to do to get their child back, and then we, like I said, we have the attorney for the parent. What I am asking you to do is we need another social worker to work with our second parent attorney. That is what my increase is for. I will draw your attention to the very last page in the packet, and you know, when people come to me and ask me for things in the court, you know, you want to know, why are you asking? What do you need? What's the problem? And I want to explain to you guys that in the beginning of 2022, I had approximately 133 children in CPS custody. At the end of June, I had 202. That is a, almost over a 60% increase of children in care. There's a lot of reasons that that is happening here in our community. One is extreme drug use, second is domestic violence, and third, I found children to be unsafe in my court as a overall finding, and contacted the State Commissioner of the Child Protection Services and asked them to come do a review of Lee County. They came here, and this increase shows you what they found when they got here. They started really looking into cases. We took a lot of children into care that needed to be taken into care. So to say all that, the Department of Child Protection Services are good people, they are. They're just like you and I, they want the best for children, but they're not always given the resources that they need, and I'm not here to bash on them tonight. That's not what this is about. This is about the fact that we have about half the number of social workers that we need here in our county, and they are working on that, but that is a slow process. And so I am taking into my own hands and trying to hire independent social workers that really get with these parents and really bear down and try to see what's going on one-on-one, and really work for them to get their children back, because as government, I don't want to raise their children. We do not do a very good job of it, to be honest. I want them to raise their children if they are able, and I want to work with them to give them their children back. Now, we all know that foster care is something we will always have, and we will always have adoptions that come out of these children that are taken, but that is not our goal as the youth court. I am not an adoption agency. I want to try to rebuild families, and that's what this request is here for tonight. I am asking you to consider an $80,000 award to the youth court. Our budget is over $600,000 of the county funds. We have, because of this large increase, we have already had to add additional lawyers, additional court time, just to cover this. To put this kind of in perspective, there's actually 208 children as of this afternoon, actually, about two hours ago, but I only took 55 children into custody all of last year, and we already have this, and we're not even halfway through the year. So what I'm saying is, I believe this to be our new normal. I believe with more social workers that we are getting, they're going to be able to do better work, and this is what we're looking at from here going forward. I think 130 around that area, we maintained for over about a year. I believe that was a false positive, if that can be, you know, it was, it's where we thought we were. And I don't mean to be hung up on numbers, that's not what this is about with the number of children in care. I want every child that needs to be in care, and I don't want one that doesn't need to be, but I work on, this is how we gauge what's going on. We've kept data from the very beginning about why this is happening, who is it happening to, what race, we look at genders, we look at all different kinds of things, and we are finding that this is just across the board, it's happening to every race, it's happening to every socio-economic group. It has no boundaries, and so our court is just asking you to consider increasing that. It will be very well used. Actually, the increase that will be done will be, like I said, to hire the second social worker. It will probably be on a contract basis, but I will tell you, the money you gave me last year, we got to hire that social worker for the first time. It has been unbelievable, the strides we've made when a parent has that person really just digging in with them and taking that plan that CPS gets them and trying to get their children back. So you gave us actually her salary, and then the county came in and gave her her benefits so we could make that a full-time position. I'm kind of asking for the same thing on this one. The county is willing to help us out some more. But again, I don't want to take up a lot of time, I know that everybody's ready to get home, but if you have any further questions, my phone number is at the very end. I know it's a lot of information, and it's a lot of words that maybe you're not used to talking about in phrases and things. I'll be happy to talk with you individually or answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Judge. At this time, we'll close the public agenda and open the regular session. The action agenda, item five, in the matter of traffic calming policy.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept this traffic comment policy.
Second by Rosie Jones. So basically, the, let's see, who is that? Dennis, you see here? Dennis, give us a quick rundown on the, or give everybody a quick rundown on the traffic calming policy, please.
Yes, thank you. You'll see, sat down with the traffic committee and looked over our, the traffic calming policy and addressed some things. I guess just, just a couple of notes, the highlights, you know, places where inundated with requests were speed tackles, so looking at it, you know, rhythm reviewed it, and felt like any of the residents, of course, there's only a loud neighborhood for others. So the residents in those areas would have, the 60% majority of residents, the rate of speed tackle being placed there. As soon as they have speed tackles, they come in pairs, and then address some other things, just simple things, like when someone comes before the traffic committee, how they have to make that request, how we document it, we find that they follow your thing, we need to inform you of that. So those are a couple of high points. I'll be glad there's a lot of information, but I'd speak to any questions you have.
So in the neighborhoods, the citizens need to call this number?
Yes, ma'am. That one was listed on there.
Okay.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item six, in the matter of review and approve tax abatement application for the Hotel Tupelo.
I move that we approve the tax abatement for Hotel Tupelo.
Second. I've got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard, Tanner.
Mr. President, we've had a work session on this item last week. This is the tax abatement for Hotel Tupelo, which has invested over $17 billion in downtown Tupelo. One thing I would like to make note, make sure the record reflects that this tax abatement is for seven years, so if we can make sure in the minutes that the motion reflects that the tax abatement is for seven years rather than the standard five, other than that, it's routine, I say routine, tax abatement application.
So with no objection from the council, Ms. Shelton needs to note in the minutes of the council that the abatement's for seven years, not five. Any objections? All in favor? The motion carries. We'll move to the routine agenda. Item seven, in the matter of approval of minutes of the August 2nd, 2022 city council meeting.
May we accept a minute?
Second.
I've got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Janet Gaston. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Number eight, in the matter of bill pay.
How many would pay the bills?
I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer, a second by Nettie Davis, and everybody showed up today, and Buddy, Chad, Janet, and I actually paid the bills, but everybody was there, so we had a good turnout today. All in favor of paying the bills? Motion carries. Item nine, in the matter of review and approve properties for lot mowings.
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any questions? All in favor? Number 10, in the matter of review and approve properties for demolition.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion by Chad Mims and a second by Travis Beard, Tanner.
President, tonight, the Department of Development Services requests approval to demolish five properties, 502 Augusta Street, 5810 Chestable Road, 517 North Gloucester, and 3424 Walsh Road. We went over those in a work session yesterday. 502 Augusta is an abandoned property, it's been abandoned since 2020, nine co- violations of record. The photos are intact, they speak for themselves. 5810 Chestable Road, also a vacant property, properties in disrepair, and the owners, I would say, have worked with us and agree that the property needs to be demolished and cleaned up, so we just ask the council to approve. That demolition tonight, 517 North Gloucester, I think we all know that's an old chiropractor business there on North Gloucester Street. It too is abandoned, the owners live out of state, so request demolition and property cleanup of that location. And 3424 Walsh Road, there's another property that is vacant, abandoned, the owners are deceased, so request approval to demolish and clean up 3424 Walsh Road.
Any questions to Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 11, in a matter of review and approve cleaning and debris removal of 1204 Audubon Drive and 1641 Oakview Circle.
I move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Travis Beard, Tanner?
Mr. President, I'll say I appreciate property owners showing up tonight to promote Audubon and happy to work with them, so we'll reach out with them. To me tomorrow, and Ms. Navy as well, we'll certainly help them out with the tree removal. As far as 1641 Oakview Circle, that is an abandoned property, the owners have verified are deceased, and there are no heirs that have taken the property, so it's not demolition worthy, so just ask the council to approve a property cleanup, 1641 Oakview Circle, and I believe that's all we've got. Be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 12, in a matter of approval, Major Thoroughfare Committee meeting minutes of June the 13th, 2022.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion by Janet Gaston, a second by Travis Beard. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? Motion carries. Number 13, in a matter of approval of Major Thoroughfare Committee meeting minutes for July the 11th, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes of Tupelo.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Rosie Jones. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 14, in a matter of approval of Tupelo Park and Rec Advisory Board minutes for May the 10th, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Rosie Jones. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? Motion carries. Number 15, in a matter of CVB minutes for August the 2nd, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second. I've got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. All in favor of approving the minutes? Motion carries. Item 16, in a matter of Court Street Downtown Parking Lot, August the 10th, 2022. And I believe that, Neil, this is a change order?
Yes, sir.
Correct a change order to the Court Street Downtown Parking Lot. Neil? Oh, I got a, I got a motion by Travis Beard, second by Buddy Palmer. Neil?
Thank you, President Brown. What I bring before you is just a request to have a change order. We're adding two eight-foot columns at the entrance to the parking lot off of Main Street, and this is just bringing this fence line into conformity to what's already there in the established fence that comes from Dr. Dickerson's old optometrist's office, so we're just kind of bringing it up to where it's uniformed and looks consistent. The change order is in the amount of $3,125.
Any questions to Neil? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 17, in a matter of approval of the amended and restated memorandum of understanding between the Tupelo Public School District and the Tupelo Police Department regarding the school resource officer program.
May we approve?
Second. I've got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Nettie Davis. Stephen Reed?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Brown. This is a longstanding agreement between the city and the Tupelo Public School District, wherein we provide to the city a total of eight uniformed officers, two of them serve as school resource officers on the school's campuses. In exchange for three of those officers, the school district will pay to us a total of, of their, of three officers' salaries. So the amended portion of this agreement is increasing that amount from previous years. In 2020, that amount was, that was paid to the city of Tupelo, it was $189,000, and this year, the school district will be providing to the city $205,966.
Any questions to Mr. Reed? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 18, in the, in the matter of correction of the minutes of June 21, 2022.
May we approve the correction of minutes?
Second. I've got a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Buddy Palmer, and the minutes are being changed to add the following verbiage. I'm going to read it as it was and then add the verbiage to it. "Bid received for bid number 2022-020PW. It's a sidewalk connectivity and existing railroad crossing. City engineer Dennis Bonds requested that the council award the bid to the lowest bid, lowest and best bid of JM Duncan for $439,204.50." We're going to add to that sentence and to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts for the project subject to ratification by the city council at a later date. The, the verbiage in the original minutes keeps going to say, Mr. Bonds explained that this bid will also have to be awarded by MDOT, but that the city must approve it first. City Councilmember Davis moved and seconded the Councilmember Brian to approve the bid as requested, and then add the following verbiage, and to allow the mayor to enter into contracts for the project subject to ratification by the city council at a later date. Back to the original verbiage of those present, the vote was unanimous in favor, and in reference to Appendix D. And basically, this is, this allows us, the mayor, to go ahead and enter into the contract, and they'll bring the contract back to us to ratify it. It just makes the process go faster, because as soon as MDOT can get it in front of the transportation commissioners, they'll prove that the work can start. Any questions? All in favor? The minutes are corrected. At this time, we can move to the study agenda. On the study agenda, item S1, in the matter of amendment to the On the study agenda, item S1, in a matter of amendment to the 2018 International Residential Code and Code of Ordinances, Chapter 7, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 12, Rental Housing Code, Section 7-216, requiring overhead range hood or downdraft exhaust equipment. We discussed that at the work session. Do y'all want to move it up?
Move it up.
This item will be moved up. This time, do, Mr. Logan, do we need to determine a need for executive session?
We do, Your Honor. We have a matter pending litigation, just an update on that, as well as, I think, three property transactions where we're seeking to buy some property.
Okay. At this time.
I move that we determine a need for executive session.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Janet Gaston. There is a need for an executive session. All in favor? Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Buddy Palmer, who's a second.
Rosie.
Rosie Jones. All in favor of going into executive session? We're now in executive session. Thank y'all for coming tonight.